This conference will now be recorded.
So, one of the items has been withdrawn. The one that on 325 James Farm has been withdrawn. The other one has been continued. So, we don't have any public hearing items today.
We don't, we could just ignore it and pretend that it's not happening tonight.
We can, you could state for the record that, you know, out of the two public hearing items, one has been withdrawn and the other has been continued. So, you can start the meeting and then state for the record.
All right. I'm gonna start it now. Good evening. This is Harold Watson, Chairman of the Planning Commission. Due to the coronavirus 19 pandemic, we are conducting this meeting on go2meetings.com on Tuesday, October 20th, 2020 at 7:02 PM. The quorum for this meeting is three, and I will now call the following elected members to speak up as present. Christina Cassanas.
Present.
William Boyd.
Present.
Myself, Harold Watson, present. Dan Sen.
Present.
And John Staley. John Staley's not here yet or tonight. So, we could be joined by alternatives. Is Debbie Lemberty here? Or is Sanders Alek here? Okay. If any of those three people join us, please let us know and we will amend our meeting tonight. But with what we have, we have a quorum. We may also, we also welcome Susmita Atata, our town planner, and Aileen Marsh, our recording secretary. Before I call the meeting to order, I'd like to remind everyone to raise their hand if they'd like to be recognized by the chair and wait to be recognized and called on each and every time throughout the meeting. Please identify yourself each time you'd like to speak. This is per Governor Lamont's executive order, which allows us to conduct, conduct virtual meetings. The public is free to listen, but may speak only at the invitation of the chair. With that, I call to order this monthly session of the Stratford Planning Commission. And let me just make a note. We had a public, a public session tonight for two items. One, which has been continued, and the other one, which has been withdrawn. So, we will now go directly into our administrative session. Do I, I don't need to have a vote on that or anything, do I?
No.
Okay. Give me one moment, please. Cause I'm, I have to find my agenda. Here it is. First item, item on our agenda is an overview of... Oh, wait a minute. I have the wrong agenda. My apologies. Give me one moment, folks. I'm sorry. The first is approval of minutes of October. It says September 15th. Is that correct? Yes.
I'm trying to put it up on the screen.
I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the minutes for the September meeting.
And anybody second that?
I second.
Okay. William, second. All in favor? Raise your hand. Okay. Anybody opposed? Okay. We're accepting that. Oh, thank you.
Yeah. I think.
All right. So, we have no zoning referrals. We have no CAM. We have no 824. We have no erosion sediment. We have no bond release. I think we're going all the way down to 8E. Stratford Housing Partnership, which we would like to have Susmita give a short review and also fill you in on the fact that this coming month, we're going to have a joint session with planning and ZBA. So, I will let Susmita tell you where we are at that, at this point in Stratford Housing Partnership.
Thank you, Harold. So, regarding Stratford Housing Partnership, we completed reviewing booklet three that was available online. And now, the consultant has taken input from the membership members, Housing Partnership members, and he's going to refine the booklet, which he did actually, and redistributed booklet four, an amended version of booklet three. This will be discussed, I think, day after tomorrow at our meeting at 1 o'clock. And then, next month, for the Planning Commission, it's a very important date for all of us because we will have a joint Land use Boards meeting regarding Housing Partnership. So, we also invited zoning commission and zoning Board of Appeals members to join the Planning Commission next month at our regularly scheduled meeting. And I hope the consultant will be there to, to inform about the Housing Partnership and their efforts on the housing plan. So, it's a very important date. I hope you all can make it. If not, I will have it recorded and put it up on the webpage for you to view the following day. Thank you.
Does anybody have any comments on this?
What date is that meeting, the joint meeting?
It is November 17th. I have it highlighted on the agenda too.
And I believe it's at the correct time of 7 o'clock. Correct?
That's, so it's during our meeting?
Yes.
Yes. Planning and everybody is joining with us.
Okay. That should be, is that meeting gonna start a little earlier considering we're having so many departments? Or is it all gonna go a little longer because we're gonna have, can be pretty intense or informative?
I think we discussed with Glenn that it would be a little, about an hour and a half that we would go through that. Primarily his presentation to us. Within our question.
Okay. So, we're not ruling on anything that night. We don't have anything on our agenda. That will be our agenda.
I do not believe so. Susmita, is that correct?
Chances are, we may have our public hearing item on 740 Honey Spot Road. If we do, then I will have to see if we wanna amend the time to, you know, so that it's not too long or late in the night. Or maybe we should call in that item for a special meeting some other day, whatever the commission members decide to do. But right now, where we stand, I don't have anything back from the applicant. So, it is safe to say that we don't have any public hearing items scheduled as of today. I mean, we have a continued item, but they have literally 155 days per Governor's executive order to continue their items. So, they only used 65 days. They have a lot of days on the books for continuing it. I don't know how prepared they are.
Susmita? Have you sent out invitation to zoning and ZBA?
Yes. I kind of emailed everyone and, you know, told them to hold the date and I will please.
I would prefer, if we could do our business, if we have to do this hearing, if we could do it at 6, that would give us time, or even 6:30. That way, we don't need to change the time for the joint because I think that's gonna be a harder thing to get everybody together since the invitation has already gone out.
Sure. I can call in a special meeting that night and put a different time to it. I just have to see what the agenda will be for us. If there is a public hearing item, then chances are it may be 6 o'clock instead of 6:30. I don't know. I have to look into our schedules.
Okay. And Dan, you had your hand up? No? Okay. So, is everybody okay? Let me just make one comment about this document. This document is, is the result of about 20 different people having their input in it, into it. The primary part of this document is to be have, is to develop clarity about what is our current situation across all of the town departments and also to come up with recommendations of how we can move forward in an incremental fashion. What is practical that we could actually do? So, we can walk away with something, some actual work items to walk away with during all of this. So, if everybody, when you get the final document, which I'm sure Glenn will, Glenn said he wanted to have it ready so everybody could read, make sure you actually spend some time with it so that you come in understanding it fairly well, particularly in terms of the POCD, particularly in terms of how it might impact zoning, so that you have real questions for him. Because I will tell you that Glenn has been really good at responding to any kind of direct question that he can go away and get information on. He really has come through again and again and again in terms of helping us. So, the more that you can load him up with requests, the better he will be. After this is all done, this is all leading up to public hearings. So, this is not gonna be a done deal. With that, let me just move on. Other items. The Sikorsky Master Plan Discussion. Susmita had asked us last, at our last meeting, to please go and study the Sikorsky Master Plan documents that are up on the planning website. I hope everybody has done it because it's a really huge and complicated thorny issue. It takes a lot. And right now, I assume that we're almost being asked to respond to this as a courtesy. What I will say is, I got a copy through Susmita's mailing. I don't know if anybody saw it, but that it was... There was, there was a list of 11 items that came through the BCA with what they felt needed to be considered in this. Yes, Susmita?
I think before we jump into discussing our comments, I would wanna share my screen and quickly go through important slides in the presentation. It's a one-hour presentation and I don't want to take up too much of your time. So, I might skip through some of the slides as we go so that you get the gist of it as to what the plan is trying to do for the next 20 years on that, on that property. Since I was not directly involved in that plan, you know, I cannot speak for them. So, I thought it's best to actually share the screen and show you those slides. Is that okay?
I think that's what we're here for. Yes.
I just have one question. I just have one question before, Susmita. So, were we a part of this?
Dan, I can't hear you.
Discussion? Can you hear me now?
Little better.
Okay. Were we part of this discussion with the city of Bridgeport? Did we have people involved in this whole process?
A year ago, almost a year ago, I went to a public hearing that was held on this, on this plan that was, anybody from Stratford or, or Bridgeport, any, were invited to come and speak. And they gave basically this presentation. So, they have done their legal due diligence in terms of getting comments. I do believe that there's another, that was still the draft. So, now we are arriving at the final, at their final. But there are still huge issues that have not been resolved. So, I don't think they're done speaking to Stratford yet. I don't think, until there's agreement, I don't think they, they have to keep speaking with us to iron out some of these points. Does that make sense, Dan?
Yes. I just wanted to make sure when we're part of this whole master plan, you know, when they were going through this process, did we have town officials that were involved in this process? Or was this just a public hearing that included Stratford people that were voicing their opinion?
We do. But what you have to remember is that that land is not Stratford's land. That is Bridgeport's land. So, it is always, how well can we work together? Let me let, before I go much further, because I could speak, I could say a lot about this. Let me let Susmita go through this and everybody grab your cup of coffee and let's be patient.
This is a two-year planning process, Dan. So, it's even before I joined Town Hall, they were doing this. When they actually called us for that meeting that Harold went to, they already had a lot of input conducted, outreach conducted to the public, it seems. I'm not aware of anything, but it just goes out in the press. And maybe there were people who attended. So, it's interesting to see and learn from what they're doing through this PowerPoint. And it's not as boring as I thought it would be. When I started looking at it from, in my, at my desk, I was trying to prioritize some of the slides in the afternoon. But I thought everything in it was important, largely because you're Planning Commission and you're charged with long-range planning for the town. So, I think it's worth looking into because then I have few concerns that I can show you. I'm definitely gonna skip those parts that are, you know, too lengthy so we can cut short and we can have more discussion on this.
Are we supposed to be hearing something?
Yeah. Are you not able to hear it?
No, we're not hearing anything.
Okay. Can you hear now?
No.
No.
I'm trying to see how I can get it.
Is it a video, Susmita?
Yes. It's a PowerPoint presentation. I'm sorry that you can't, you know, hear it. I don't know how to make this audible. I'm trying to do it right now. Can you see it?
We can see it. We can't hear it.
Can you go on that link? Can you go to www.planbdr-airport.com on your computers on the side?
Okay.
And in that, if you go on top under presentations, it's our public presentation three.
Susmita, what was that again?
It's right there on the, on the PowerPoint thing.
So, you would like all of us to listen to it separately?
No. Since you can't hear it, I can just quickly walk through this while you're looking at that on your screens as well. And if you wanna play your audio, you're welcome to. So, basically, they have, like you can see on this page here, there was public outreach conducted since March 7, 2019. And then, you know, the most recent public informational meeting was on November 20th, 2019, which was the public meeting three, which both Harold and I attended. And the partners in this project were Town of Stratford, City of Bridgeport, Federal Aviation Authority, CA, I don't know what CA means, to be honest, and other organizations here. And I will move to the next slide. So, this is a master plan. And a master plan means, once every 10 years, the airport has to do a plan to be compliant with FAA. And they will, their plan would look at the 10-year or 20-year horizons about what they would be doing with their property. Yes?
The slides aren't moving. It's still on the original slide. It's still on page two.
Okay. Let me just see why they're not moving. It's a little tricky here. One second. Aileen just mentioned CAM and CT Airport Authority. I didn't know that. I'm trying to share my screen again. I'll stop screen share and then I will share it again and see if that works. Okay. Can you see now?
Yes.
So, based on this slide, an airport master plan means a plan for the development of the property itself. It's slightly different than the comprehensive plan that we do for an entire community. It's just specific to that property and it shows the proposed developments on that property for the next 10 or 20 years, what they wish to undertake. Yes. So, I'm sorry. So, this is a commercial airport. I mean, not like a passenger airport, like you all are aware. And it has 750 acres, two active runways. You have the details on there. They also talk about the type of aircraft that visit this airport in the following few slides, which I will just quickly skim.
But the one thing to remember here is runway 11 and runway six. Runway 11 is the one that runs to the top, kind of parallel to access road. And runway six runs parallel to Lordship.
Yes. And I want you to know that this runway 11-29, this property here, there is this access road extension piece. If you go in our parcel database, you will find that that is owned by Town of Stratford right now. And there are wetlands here. And they're trying to do some improvements here to extend this runway 11-29, which might encroach into the town-owned piece and also into the wetlands in this area, which is to be mindful of. This is access road here. There are some private properties here, privately owned parcels. And whatever development they're proposing to undertake, I'm not sure if the neighbors immediately north of this property, like these privately owned parcels owners are made aware of those improvements. It would be not surprising to know that they're not aware of it because of the type, you know, of outreach typically is conducted. Usually, they put a press release out in the newspapers and sometimes people don't catch it. So, that's something that the Planning Commission, I think, could encourage the planning team to reach out to, to let the immediate property neighbors know of what the plans are for the airport. The other thing is, like Harold said, this, they keep referring this as runway 6-24 and that as runway 11-29. They're not proposing any major improvements to this runway, the 6-24 for the shorter one, but definitely they're trying to expand 11-29 so they could have more space for, you know, service landing. And they could, because of the expansion of the runway, they could attract more flights to this airport. So, I'm going to skip some of these slides. And this is an interesting slide. I want to show you all on how the operations are projected and total aircraft, you know, by year. So, the annual growth has been 0.9%. But if you look at the airline carrier service for 2018 and 19, they're not assuming any passenger service, but by 2024, they're looking at some kind of service at the airport. And that is a best-case scenario that they're projecting.
You just had a, you showed the aircraft. Can you just get that back to show the aircraft that would be able to access the runway?
Okay. This one. That's the slide. And that shows the aircraft types at BDR. That's the name of the airport. These are the types that are being used right now. Yes, Christina?
Now, that was my question, is if this is what was being used now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a small laptop. I need to keep moving the screen a little bit to keep clicking.
So?
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So, I'm gonna show you the recommendations. The next slide will come up. So, this is the current airfield layout. Runway 6-24 has high-profile clearance. And runway 11-29 is slightly longer. There is no full parallel taxiway. And there are some safety deficiencies that they would like to overcome in the near future.
Oh, that's 11-29.
So?
So?
Go ahead, William.
What is that? Does the runway go in both directions? So, if you come in one way at 6 and the other way it's 24, is that what that means?
It's also, it's also different sized planes.
Okay. So, it's only commercial now. So, if Harold flew in with his buddies on his airplane, it's only commercial. It's not, they can't bring someone in and use it as a business. That's the way it is now. So, how does this relate to us as the Planning Commission? Are we only over the areas of marshland or wetlands that are not being used? Is that part of what we have to legislate on?
Well, it's just that if they do the runway area improvements and would attract passenger service, then you have to look into the type of traffic, noise, and other impacts to the nearby areas. Also, keep in mind that this is a very flood-prone area and flood zone. When you look at their master planning document, you don't find any discussion on what type of flooding impacts would happen with this development scenario and how they would be mitigating it. So, my general comment is that although there are, there's a downside to this, there's also an upside, which is good for the economy. Like, you'll have more jobs, more blue-collar jobs, more revenues, more restaurant business, more tax dollars being spent in the community. So, in order to balance, I think I would take a neutral approach and just ask the consultants to just share what their findings are on what the impacts are and what the mitigation efforts would be, if any, for this whole plan. And that's my general comment when I saw this. I also saw that there was no discussion on transportation impacts at all. That's something to consider. And about property taking, if there is any, I don't think there is any. But there's some, like I said, there's some private properties immediately north. I don't know if they wanna encroach in there. Right now, they're not showing anything like that. But again, they will have to also understand that there's one Town of Stratford parcel where they would like to, you know, expand into. So, that's another, you know... So that's another, you know, property issue that has to be addressed in this whole development scenario.
They are a registered FAA. Uh, airport. So a lot of what we might say becomes a federal issue. Once we say yes to this, this rehab and extension. Once we allow them to go beyond those limits, then we Stratford really doesn't have a whole lot of control about what's happening. So now is the time that we need to be very clear about what we expect. On the borders of this property, not just in within the property itself. Because what you're seeing here is the, is step one. But if you keep looking further in the document, there's a step two and a step three and a step four and each time they're expanding. Operations.
So here's the thing, uh, because we are not able to hear the audio. We can do one of two things. Either I can call in and put this on speaker so you can hear it. Or you can take your own time in reviewing this. I gave you the gist of the presentation to you all today. And then maybe, uh, you can send me your emails separately. You can't send us a group because of open meeting laws and you know, how you shouldn't behave. As a commission outside public, uh, you know, publicly held meetings. So if you send me yours, uh, com- your comments individually, I can compile them into a document. And send it to the mayor's office. So you know, every commission and every board is sending their comments. Um, so that we send one coordinated response as a town. And the public gets opportunity to weigh in on this. That's why I put it as a public workshop item and I. I requested you all to reach out to your constituents as well to attend the meeting. Um, but in case they haven't heard of it, please encourage them to look at this document, understand the impacts. Know what's at stake and you know, there, like I said, there's no bad solution or good solution here. There's, there's merits and demerits with everything. And this is one of those cases where, you know, economy. And, um. Other land use impacts of, you know, have to be carefully weighed and understood. So there's no right or wrong answer here. Um, if you would like to give me your response by tomorrow, that's fine. If you want to discuss right now. I mean, it's up to the chair.
I, I honestly, I do not think that we can. Uh, that's, that could be a vote amongst all of us, but this is not the way to give honest weight to a subject like this. Impact on Stratford. Um, and there are items in here that, uh. You know, Z B A came up with 11 major points that I think. We should at least discuss those points. Uh, there is also, this is all based, all this work is done in a 1998. I believe it is E I S Environmental Impact Statement, uh, which has been superseded by. 2016 by our, our, um, work that we did on coastal, on coastal resiliency. Whereas where everything about this property changed and the recommendation is to consider essentially redeveloping. The small portion that exists around the current terminal building. As a industrial area, because that's the only, that's the only area 20 to 25 years from now will not be subject to daily flooding. This program doesn't, I mean, this project doesn't mention at all elevating these roadways six feet that they would have to be. In order to not be in a, in a monthly flood zone 15 years from now. So I think there's a lot of things in this project that. Are realities that need to be discussed. I, I will recommend to the, to my fellow committee people, go back and read. What Susmita had sent to everybody, which was the, the 11 comments from the, um. Uh, from Z B A that they had written. And also if you'll go back and look at under planning and zoning. The, uh, resiliency document that is, uh, from 2016, 2017. Which goes into real detail about this area of Stratford. Yes, Susmita.
Yes, Harold, I just wanted to add one thing. I know the coastal resiliency plan talks about access road improvements. And elevating access road and main street. But, um, the way those roads are right now, if you have to elevate them, they're, I think at nine or 10 feet and they're in a coastal. A E zone and a limit of moderate wave action zone. So the most recent, um, guidelines that we receive from state department of. Energy and environmental protection is that we have to elevate at least two feet above base flood elevation. So the, if the base flood elevation is in at 11 or 13 feet, depending on what it is in that area. Two feet above would be 15 feet. So for elevating a road 15 feet high. I mean, at least seven more feet higher than what it is right now. You would need enough area. You just, you can't just vertically lift something. You would need the expanse, um, the, you know, the breadth. Uh, to actually build it up. And right now it is also surrounded by private property. And the only way you could do it is if the airport was willing to accommodate some of it on their property. So the point comes, like you said, when a private property owner is redeveloping his property. He or she is asked to mitigate flooding impacts to the surrounding properties. Um, through offsite improvements or drainage improvements or whatever. In this case. The question is, what is the airport trying to do to mitigate impacts to the neighboring properties? And it may not be, um, you know, raising the road may not be the solution. Uh, I don't know if it's practical or not to lift, um, a road to that high and just expand that, you know, laterally. But it is, it's something that engineers have to look into, I think.
Susmita, when we were doing the study, what we discovered is that there's flooding that comes from three major directions. You get a breach from the marine channel, which everybody knows that's the area. You know where I'm talking about everyone? The water comes in through the marine basin. The water comes down from, uh, the W P C A, uh, lagoon into fresh pond. And all that water comes down into, um, into, uh, the marsh. Uh, one of this, this runway extension would cut out. And they would have to fill five acres of land, which essentially would block all that water in the town of Stratford. As it comes in. The problem is that we discovered when we were doing, uh. Vision statements on the, on the resiliency document is that in addition, you also get flooding that comes across. Uh, Long Beach into, um. The Great Meadow and floods back in. So you have water coming from three different directions. Which means that this area is going to be very difficult to say a dam or a dike is the quick solution. It really, it really, this kind of development is going to require someone to look at. A very holistic area of flooding. It's the same problem that they, uh, although it's not well publicized. It's the same problem that is part of the army engine plant site. Is that flooding is coming from multiple directions. So you can't just automatically elevate the whole thing. Because everything around it gets flooded. So I just want to make sure that if Stratford is going to do anything, that that information gets to the people that. Uh, are. Doing this because in my discussions with them, they were surprised to hear that we had done a. Study in 2017. Yes, Dan.
Just a quick question. So is the expansion to help with safety or is the expansion for. Access to more larger planes and more commercial flights?
Both. I think it will have a huge impact on Connecticut's economy in general and the tourism industry. Uh, the location of businesses, um, like I, you know, Amazon is already nearby and Amazon typically. And other companies like Amazon typically look at locations where they have direct, um, access, uh, by air. Not just by road. Um, we already have a fright access. So. There are things to consider, but there's also like all airports, um, that I know currently, not all, but at least Tweed. Floods really bad.
They're going through the same thing right now. I just saw an article in the paper.
Both airports is about the same. They're both. Line after line, they both have the same kind of flooding. They both have the same long term prognostic- prognosis of. Of constant flooding. Uh, they both have the same locality of neighborhoods nearby. The, it's really, but it's a choice between them or us to put this. So that Southern Connecticut has a airport.
The positive about Stratford is that once you take 95 exit and you go on to main street. You directly get linked to the airport. You don't really have to go into the residential neighborhoods as much. Uh, which is unlike Tweed where you have to really go through the neighborhoods to reach the airport. So the traffic impact would be larger there. And the good thing about, um, you know. Uh, the airport in Stratford is that it's surrounded by marshland. And there is, um, a way they can mitigate impacts if they're really considered engineering wise. Um. And there is a way to do it. It's just, are they addressing it or not? There could be a way to do it, I believe, but they haven't addressed it in their master plan. So here's what I suggest, Harold. We can walk through, um, B Z A's 11 points. Uh, but it is more fruitful, like it's Tuesday and I shared with you where the location of the PowerPoint is and. Um, you know, what to look for. If you want, I can call in a special meeting quickly for just half an hour to discuss your comments. And then we can.
Is that something people would be willing to do? My honest feeling is that we should try to get our voice heard. So.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that? If we were to do a special meeting on, just on this?
Sure.
William?
Yes.
Yeah, and so I think everybody here would be. Uh, Susmita, if you can get this running. Meanwhile, guys, go back and look at this. It's on the website. And spend some time looking at it. Look at the borders and the boundaries because, and look at the incremental build out of this. You're looking at one runway here, but essentially they're talking about building up both runways. And eventually expanding them to the current 3,000 to the, to 4,700, which that's what allows the bigger jets. Because you can only have certain sized jet on a certain length airway. A longer, a bigger, a longer airway allows bigger jets. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I remember, um, vaguely, uh, at that meeting about a year ago. This is kind of like right after the election, I think. I think it was a couple of weeks after the election. Um. Discussion about those larger jets. Um, and there had been a lot of concern about, um. The noise that those larger jets would create, um, as the approach, because when they were going over the approach. Patterns or some of the proposed approach patterns and they would go directly, uh, some of them would go directly over residential, uh, neighborhoods. And there was a comment there, um, that I'm, I'm just going to paraphrase because I'm not going to remember it verbatim. About how the jets now of the size that they want to, um, come to the, to the airport. Um, are much quieter. The technology is a lot quieter. Has there been discussion? I guess I'm, I'm making this point because I guess. Well, I'll probably get an answer to my question as I go through this again, but are they, um. Has there been any additional conversation about that? Has there been any sort of narrowing down of, um. You know, what those flight patterns are going to look like, um, and where they're going, where they're going.
They have undertaken a sound study.
Yeah.
So that is new from the time that we were there.
Okay.
So that's a new study. It's, so that must have been in reaction to.
Yeah.
The things that we said.
Okay, is that on the website? The results of the sound study or are they still doing it?
They're still doing it.
Okay.
It is draft noise study. It's, uh, there's an asterisk over there and on the slide. Maybe it is on the website. I have to take a look at it and see. I don't know if they've completed it.
I don't think so. I'm looking at the webpage right now. Um.
Okay. Well, you know, we don't have to hold a meeting this late in the night, uh, because it's an administrative item and, um. We are just reviewing comments as a commission together as long as it's notified appropriately. You know, F A F will always does their zoning commission meetings in the afternoons and lunchtime. So if everybody is able to make it in the lunchtime. We can take out an hour on Friday, um, just to go or not even hour, just a half an hour, just to go over all your comments. And come up with an, um, agreed upon, uh, you know, recommendation that we can send to the mayor.
You said this Friday, Susmita?
Yes, um, because the comments are due by October 31st. So can you do this Friday?
I can't. I've got, I've got conference calls all day long on Friday.
How about Monday lunchtime?
What day is that? Did you say?
Uh, Monday is October 25th, I suppose.
Yes.
Yes.
The 26th.
Yeah, if you can do like 12 to one.
Yeah, Monday is fine. I can do Monday.
Christina, is that good with you?
I'm sorry, um, could you repeat that again? What day?
Monday, October 26th, either 12 to one or one to two.
That is a terrible time for me. Um, hold on, I'm just, hold on. Let me just see. I, I can do 12 to one.
Okay.
I can make that work.
Dan, can you do 12 to one?
Yes, yep.
William.
Lunchtime is fine.
Okay. 12 to one. Thank you, Christina.
William, can you do that?
Yes.
Okay. Would need one hour. It would be just half an hour maybe because after you have reviewed. Um, I encourage you to, um, write something and send it to me so I can put everything in one document and send it to staff. You know, compile report to the commission. So you all can take a look at it over the weekend. Uh, in that document and then, you know, you can just agree to disagree on certain things. Or maybe just all agree on it and then just, you know, recommend that as a group.
Okay.
We should check with the other members too, Harold. So I will reach out to Sandra Zalik, at least the regular members and John Scaly. Um, and request them, even if they don't think they can attend, we have a quorum here. Uh, so I think it should be okay.
Particularly John, make sure that he hears from us.
Yeah. So I'll stop sharing my screen here and you all know where to find this. I'll send you by email as well tomorrow. On where to, just, just look at the PowerPoint when you're working, just play it in the background. And look at the important slides and you will know the gist of the conversation. There's one last thing I want to tell about the plan. Under the environmental justice section, they talk about no impacts because there are no minorities nearby, which is incorrect. Um, opportunity zone is immediately to the north of this site. And it's a very diverse neighborhood there with, um, you know, Hispanics and African Americans and blue collar working force. Over there. So definitely there are going to be environmental justice impacts and they should consider it. Um, so that's something I would like for you to look into the plan document, uh, that section where they say there are no impacts. Uh, and therefore environmental justice doesn't have to be addressed. Um, so there are some, you know, uh, incorrect statements in there that have to be corrected. If you have the time to go through the plan in detail, that'll be great. Otherwise, at least go through this PowerPoint. If you have the time to go through the plan in detail, that'll be great. Otherwise, at least go through this PowerPoint.
And also look at the, look at our um, look at the, at that long document on uh resiliency, because there was a lot of focus given to that area. That is, that is what we're gonna have to look at, is all the areas around that are in the FEMA flood zone. So anything that creates a lack of flow is gonna have real impacts on Stratford in the decades to come. I'm not saying don't do this. I'm saying that they need to think about that and make sure that what they're doing doesn't create problems for us that we will end up having to pay for. Versus them who could have a better chance of getting funds for it. Yes, William?
Is our position as the planning committee on this commission to look at this? What is the town of Stratford or the mayor department of economic developments say on this? Because we might be looking at it for environmental and all the right reasons. But they may be looking at it for as an economic boom, which may supersede anything we might say. Is that a poss- strong possibility?
Doesn't
Yeah, yes. And if you look at the P O C D, if you go through and find the instances in the P O C D where the airport is mentioned, flooding is always mentioned in those instances or in most of those instances. At the same time, we are talking about finding a way to uh to um get as much capital out of that site as possible for our town. But one of the things that was discussed as part of an economic development plan is could you take that same land and redevelop it with a corporate office in it and make the same amount of money? Remember, we're not getting taxes off this property. So it's, it it will never be a boon to our tax roll. What will be a boon is the traffic that it generates.
Well, I'm looking at it too. If A- Amazon is here and if they expand and they land planes, ultimately there'll be more commerce and subsequent businesses uh to handle that sort of flow. So there is something for Stratford to gain. And to your point, we don't get any rental income or any in- income from the airport, but there could be a build-out from the other industries flying into that airport, which at the time, they were trying to develop the uh army plant as a movie studio. And the airport was pretty much excellent position, in position for to uh fund that. But it just seems like that army plant is just not going anywhere, because that was the thought back then.
But it, but if Stratford owned some of this property, there was some economic uh I wouldn't say uh windfalls, but there is some uh, you know, in order for them to expand, they would have to grab a a parcel of our property, which
Well, you will see in the, in all the documents that they have, except in this one, that the most recent document, there is a disclaimer on every single page saying that uh Stratford has, um I forget the phrasing of it, but something to the effect that Stratford ha- has a contractual agreement that Bridgeport cannot expand any of the runways. And the way that happened was when we gave up the land on the north side of uh on the Husatonics uh side of uh the Army Engine Plant. We gave that land over to Bridgeport, a portion of that land, and agreed upon uh allowing that to happen. We, we did it. This is the previous mayor. We did it um with that that obligation on the part of of Bridgeport that we would do this, allow them to put in the safety barriers that they did in the most, in the renovation of five or six years ago. Those extensions, the bumper extensions they put on, and they moved Main Street over to accommodate those extensions. That was all done, but our pound of flesh was you cannot expand any more than that. Now they're asking for a substantial increase uh down the line in multiple phases, but they're, they're asking for increases that one of their, you'll see it on the maps when you look. One of their in- one of their plans is to move Main Street so that it runs on top of the current uh closed landfill site next to Short Beach.
The superfund site?
Yes, because all of that land would be needed in order to extend the runways further. So there's a lot of stuff that we really need to look at very carefully for for Stratford. And it might be, hey, you know what? We're never gonna have the money to move that lan- landfill. This might be a perfect way to say, you have to mitigate the whole landfill. And we'll move our Main Street over for you.
So basically, what you're saying, Harold, is that that tiny little wetlands piece is our, our only ace?
No, that's not actually our ace. Our ace is at the corner of Access Road and Lordship Boulevard. We own a corner of that wetland there.
Okay.
That's owned by Stratford. It's not owned by Bridgeport. And that is where the, remember I told you, remember the L runway that, that's the one they want to extend for the biggest planes, the longest length they need it. And that runway would require them to fill four and a half acres of wetlands right there in order to extend the uh in order to extend the runways. Uh look, I'm not saying this is a bad idea. I'm just saying if it happens, we should make sure that it happens to our good. I mean, one of the things that falls right into their flight path is the new hot dog stand.
Cricket car hop?
Cricket would have to go. Because they, they need all that area cleared with no elevations in order for the planes to come in and out. So that's where maybe we do need to hear from economic development, because what's gonna happen to that area? The area where the FedEx is, I know it's come before us this year, but that area in front of the FedEx building can't be built on now if they do this, because that needs to be part of the low elevation zone. Um so there's a lot of things that are red-letter box for later on, but once we commit to saying you can do this, the FAA is gonna make the decision, oh yes, ban yours. And then we're not gonna have much say. So that's my only, that's my only feeling. I I, I'm sorry I'm being opinionated, but hopefully I'm I've read, I've read through this, these documents enough to know that there are at least questions we should ask. They know, we know. I think we lost William, and I think we lost Sushmita.
Yeah, I'm here.
I don't know
To plug in my uh
So we're gonna be able to discuss this. I'm, hope- hopefully I've sold you on doing some research on your own. Try to spend some time um take a half a day on Saturday or Sunday and look through this information if you would. I don't wanna be accused of selling my opinion. But in any case, next we had, I, is, are we, everybody okay on this? Anybody have a comment?
No, we're good.
So the next thing we have is uh I think we're nearing the end of our meeting. We have a, we do have something on the calendar here, and I'm just gonna mention it, but I'm waiting, I asked Sushmita if she could get some more information on what other towns are doing. Zoning has asked, I believe it's zoning, has asked that we uh adopt a text amendment on set fa- setback requirements to water bodies and in uh and wetlands from a hundred feet to fifty feet. Now, we don't even know yet if that's legal for us to do. So Sushmita's gonna check with, I guess, the DEP find out what they've what have other towns done. Primarily what they're looking for is on properties where there are wetlands. Not necessarily water bodies. This does say water bodies, but I was told it's primarily wetlands that are on pieces of property. Could we change it from a hundred feet required setback to fifty feet? I have my own feelings about it, but I would love to hear what experts say before we go any further. So I'm not gonna bring that up on the meeting tonight. I think we need to get more information from Sushmita. Unless someone wants to go through and look up environmental regulations on all of this. Uh but I think she could get us. Yes, Sushmita?
I also uh mentioned to Harold right before you all came to this meeting today that I would be uh getting an intern's help um very soon, who can actually call, make few calls. Um this is not as much deep issue as much as it's a town issue, because it's the inland wetlands they're looking at, not the coastal wetlands. And the inland wetlands are in the town's purview and the town zoning regulations. Um like I said earlier, like the airport is a classic example on how close a development can get to the wetlands. And without those regulations in place, like without hundred feet, if you had only fifty feet, they can stretch as closer to the wetlands as they can. So that's something at stake and that's something that we need to consider as a commission, if that's, that's a wise thing to do. Um but I will definitely uh look into what Milford is doing or Fairfield and Trumbull and other communities are doing, how stringent their regulations are. And if there is anything that allows other communities to do it, then that's something worth considering. Because um the zoning commission is definitely seeking an informed opinion from this commission on that.
And could you, if, if in your travels, if anybody has any text, Sushmita, could you also give us a copy of that as a basis? Piece of text. So uh given, with that, I think we have covered everything, except anybody have anything that they would like to bring up?
Our planning commission calendar?
Thank you very much. Everybody should have received the final planning commission calendar. Uh we have to vote on that, saying that we're approving it. Basically, it hasn't changed with the exception of we are gonna start our meetings a half an hour earlier, if I'm correct, or an hour earlier.
Half an hour.
Half, at six thirty instead of seven o'clock. I just think that gives us, if we can get in and out, still gives us a little part of an evening. Uh so if everybody looked at it, I would like to have a vote that we accept that. Would it, anybody like to make a?
So moved. Dan Seft, zone four.
Anybody second? Yes, sir.
Question. How does that affect our meetings with public access and what standard? Is that something we have to post to let the public know?
Still, all this is for twenty-one. So yes, all this would still have to be posted and everything else the same way. Uh you can change, we can change it anytime we want, but this would be changing it for the whole year, all of twenty-twenty-one.
So per governor's executive order, um we are allowed to do co- um remote meetings until next month only. They're saying that uh these guidelines may be extended until February next year. If they do get extended, we can still hold virtual meetings like we're doing. Even otherwise, I think it's something that the town should reconsider. Uh I don't see why not, why they wouldn't extend it. So at least until next February, we should be okay doing the online meetings. And I don't know how situation changes after that.
And Sushmita, if I could just add, I I I'm not speaking out of turn, I hope. I got a strong sense from the mayor that she believes it will be springtime before we discuss stopping virtual meetings. So hopefully, we can continue. Yes, Christina?
Um I just noticed that we got bumped to room two thirteen. Is there a reason why?
Did we say room two thirteen?
It says on the meeting, um on the PDF that you sent, I'm sorry, the file that you sent with the calendar, that we uh meetings will be conducted in room two thirteen.
No, I, it should be council because they're televised meetings. So that's an error that will take care of.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Christina. That was probably a mistake on my part, because most of my other commissions meet in two thirteen and
Oh, got it, okay.
I don't think we need to re-vote on that. That's just a So I think we have everything. If anybody speaks with uh John, ask him if he's okay.
I'm sorry, Harold, Harold, he just emailed. Um check your email.
He emailed me?
All of us and the mayor.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't get any emails, Christina, regarding the commission.
You were, hold on. The mayor was uh included. Um yes, you were included at s-satota@uh townofstratford.com. This is about um an hour ago.
Oh, he's, oh, I didn't check my email an hour ago.
Sorry.
He couldn't get on. He's having issues getting on, so he's venting.
Yeah. And, and I may or may not have gotten a little snarky.
Well, I don't know what, why is he not able to get on when we are all on the meeting?
I know.
He's uh um techn- technologically challenged.
We do have his cell phone number, right? Uh Eileen, do you have his cell phone number? Maybe I can call him quickly. I, you know, I don't look into my emails when I'm in the meetings. It gets very trickier.
I'll talk to him.
Could you give him a buzz right now, Dan?
Well, we're just about ready to close the meeting, though. I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna do that and then close the meeting.
Close the meeting yet, because you didn't vote on the calendar. You have to take a formal vote on the calendar.
Okay, so Dan made a motion. I seconded it.
Uh, okay, all in favor? Aye. So four in favor. Anybody opposed? No. All right, so it passes?
With it, it passes with the change from two thirteen to council chambers.
Yes. And my apologies to uh Mr. Staley, and hopefully we'll be able to work it out uh for him the next time. Uh guys, I always go on ten minutes early. I'm here, sitting here ten minutes early so that I know that I've connected.
I'm never early for anything, so the fact that I actually
It's easier than I am, but if you don't, if you have any problems, text Christina, because she's the one that keeps up with everything.
It's because my butt is glued to my chair in front of a Zoom meeting all day. I don't worry about this stuff, but I want to.
I just wanna say, it's very disturbing that I always get this um note from John Staley copying my superiors that I am not delivering packages uh and I'm not keeping on time or I am not being responsive.
Absolutely untrue.
Very, you know, I just, you know, I I told him several times that if it's a commission package that is worth delivering, like um if it's a site plan review or if it's a subdivision application, we, we, I take the effort to come and drop it off, even though um we have all gone remote right now and we're not doing any hand deliveries for any of our other commissions. I'm the only one doing for housing partnership and the planning commission. And the times when I don't feel that there, it's, you know, it's not necessary, like airport plan is hundred pages. I can't print and deliver a hundred pages to everyone's desks uh at your home, so that's why I shared the link. Um and whenever it is not possible, I have tried to keep in touch by emails and I have sent multiple emails regarding the commission meeting last week. I sent three emails with information and it's just very hurtful. It's not the first time, and and I'm bringing it before the commission. If you have a problem with me, if we can resolve it one-on-one than copying everybody else or superior to me and who don't know what is happening at my end, because I am managing the commission. They don't supervise me on a day-to-day basis. And they get these emails saying that they're not getting information and it's just, you know, I just don't know where the disconnect is.
I will, Dan is gonna speak with John, and I'm gonna send a, an email to uh our mayor and tell her my feelings about the situation. And tell her my feelings about the situation.
Let me just, uh, let me explain something to you too, you know, John's had a tough year and I'm gonna give him the benefit of the doubt here. Your rights, Susmita, I don't think, don't take this personally, I don't think it was meant that way as far as John was concerned, but I'll have that conversation with him and I'm sure, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind, I, I spoke to him before too, Dan, and I told him, he emailed Jay once, CC'd me and said. Uh, that I wasn't doing my job right and he didn't get the packages delivered. Then I called him and I said, if you have a problem, let me know, and then I started delivering the package, you know. Uh, per his request, even though it's administrative items only. And I know he's had a tough year, I agree with you that not everything was going well with him, but at the same time, uh, you know, I'm a professional here. And I just feel like it's, it's not right, if, if things are really wrapped right, I agree that, you know, I slacked off. I, I was not able to do my job right.
No.
I tried to deliver what you need.
You have managed to keep us moving forward this whole time. And even I, it's taken me to realize, oh, she's not like in her office, she's home. It's, it, it, it's a realization, uh, that we all have to come up, come up.
Susmita, as a, as a new member, um, you, you have been, number one, you have been on top of everything. And when there have been changes in our agenda and things have been put on, taken off, last second. You've been really great at getting us that information. As a new member, you've been invaluable to helping me understand how we do what we do and what's going on and the issues that, um, are brought to our attention. So I'd like to say thank you publicly for, for your work.
Thank you Christina.
I second that, the only comment I have is, um, the last meeting, I sensed a bit of tension between John and Harold. Not between John and Harold, but directed at Harold, and I didn't know what that was about. So there seems like there might be John and Harold and then Susmita is getting dragged into it, there's, there's some kind of friction. I'm not saying it's Harold's fault, but it's obviously friction, I overlooked it, but it was very clear that there was anger. You could see it through the video feed, so I don't know what that's about, but it seems like that must be the issue behind all of this. And I'm sure this is recorded, so you'll be able to see it, but it was, if you look at the old meeting, you can see it, there was a bit of anger. Behind a comment, so I don't know what that's about, but I think maybe start there.
Well, all I can say is that John and I have worked.
Um, sorry. I cannot send a group email, so I just brought it up in the commission meeting directly. Um, I didn't mean to, you know, um, get a pat on the back here, but I just wanna make it clear that. You know, it's always been the protocol, once we went remote, that we are not going to deliver any packages. Because of the, you know, virus spreading. In spite of that, there were events or instances where I came down to your houses and I dropped off the packages. And there are times when I thought it was absolutely necessary that you had those packages in your hand. And the other times, like today, there was no way I could have printed a hundred page document.
Nor should you have, had to, so I think we're all adults, I think that issue offline maybe can be squashed. But I think it's more of a personality thing than is at the actuality of we're doing something wrong, I just think it might be a personality thing. That's my two cents.
I honestly think, I'm friends with John, John and I've worked on this committee for a couple of years now. I think that John called me on me being too talkative and it's okay, I have no problem with him calling me on that. Um, we all try our best. And Susmita, I'm always happy to work with you, I think you do a great job. Um, so the same with all my other commission members, I think we try our best. So with that, I think we should wish John best, tell him we look forward to see him, hopefully he will be there with us on Monday. And, uh, with that, I would, unless there's something else, anybody, I would be happy to hear.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to a second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, good.
Hey guys.
Everybody be safe, take care.